Waiting for 10:01.
The building hall.
Okay. Yeah, we can put us. You could probably put this or I think.
It was the lens.
No, he's dealing with something. He's gonna come back. Multiple things going on today apparently, so.
We might check that.
So, all right, 6:01, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I am going to, we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance for those who choose to do so, and Silent Meditation for those who choose not. I don't. I'm gonna point for anybody who will read it, but say it out loud or silently. And we are moving on to the approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any input on the minutes from last meeting?
I'll make the minutes.
Okay. Or have input? Marcia second? I don't know the right words to say, but I think all in favor of approving the minutes from last meeting, December's meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone?
Abstention.
Abstention for Vanessa. You wanna post? Great. Moving on to public input. Do we have any input either from Leland or?
I don't have anything right now.
Anything over there? Just taking up?
I have a few questions.
Sure, we can hear them, but I don't think we can answer it on while we're here. But, yeah, do you have some feedback for us? Yeah.
You said the book sale? Their own is B S M W S A. A R R O W M A N.
Did you wanna stand up in the front or?
Yeah, people could actually hear you and see you.
Do you want me up here?
Yeah, up here, yeah, just in case someone's watching the meeting maybe.
Okay.
Yeah.
You used to have a book sale before the library got closed for the renovation and pandemic. And now you don't. And I always viewed it as a win-win from a standpoint of the public attendance. There's always a long line to get in every time you held one. And from a library standpoint, you always took in about $25,000 a year. So, I'd like to understand why you no longer do that book sale. You had a lot of women that ran it, did an excellent job. And for some reason, it just disappeared when the library reopened yesterday. So why did it stop? Being an event?
So, I don't know the best way when people are asking questions for a public input, like.
We're not supposed to comment on public.
Yeah, we can't comment, but I know you and I had talked about it, but I'm happy to circle back with you. There's a good way to get in contact with you after.
Okay.
I could see if maybe I left something, something out, because I know we talked at the used book sale for sure, so. Yeah, any just questions?
So you don't have a good idea? From the same point as to why I got you checked?
I do, but, yeah, we just, we can't address it in the. Oh, yeah, we also do that. Add it to our new business to discuss at our next board meeting.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Good for women.
Okay. That'll give me some time to look into if there's any information I'm missing. Was there?
I got another question.
Sure.
One of the big commercials when we had the renovation was that we needed more room, right? We had, the library was running out of room. Okay, so we had to get spend $9 million to get more room in the library. Okay, so if you take a look at the Hildeberg Room, why didn't you take that wall where the piano is and push it out about 30 feet? Make the Hildeberg Room bigger. That's a loaded question. Because there was a brochure that came out, but I think Tim put it together. And it showed an event being held at the Hildeberg Room that was overflowing out into the hallway with lots of people sitting in the hallway right outside where the cafe is now. Okay? So, looked like a good idea. We're running out of room. We need more space. So I attended the Christmas concert about a week and a half before Christmas last month. And there was an overflow crowd. And there were still sick people that are out in the hallway because there wasn't enough room in that room. So I'm saying, wait a minute, we just spent $9 million to give ourselves more room. And the part of the commercial was that, that photograph in the brochure that says, this is the reason why we need more room, so please go vote for this upgrade. And I go to the Christmas concert and it's the same drill, what's changed? Another question is, this library got changed, got renovated, okay, to hold big events, right? Like if you have a big event for a number of people, there are five times the number of people that'll fit into Hildeberg Room. Okay, so you, there was an event back in 2007 that was put on by a lady who survived the concentration camps in Germany. She had a tattoo on her arm and the place was bombed. And Tim's predecessor was the director at the time, and they cleared out the library over there, which was a big job. Right now, it's not that much of a job because all these things, I think, slide away, right? And all those cushion chairs and all those tables that fit four people, the headlights, all had to be moved out of the way. So that's what we're gonna hold the big events now, right? So how many big events have we held in the last two years since the library opened? I don't know of any, but I don't, I don't, I don't run the library. And my next question is, how many, in other words, how many events were in the backlog? Okay, when the library was closed, so when they opened up, you'd have room to run big events. Have there been any big events in the last two years since we opened up? Are there any events in your backlog for 2024 or 2025? Is that a unreasonable question?
No, I think it is something I'll have to do some research on and can get back to you. Can I make sure I have your contact information to follow up with you? You can give it to me.
I'll give it to you after.
Yeah.
I'll give it to you later.
Because unless it's wanted recorded.
After the meeting, so.
Okay.
I'll give you anything you want. I have another question. The monthly newsletter that comes out, in there it mentioned that there's been expanded hours in 2020, expanded hours in 2023 at the library. As a statement, okay, if you read the write-up on Tim announcing his retirement, it says, we expanded hours in 2023. What does that mean? I know the library opens up at 9:30. And on Fridays, it closes at 6:00. We know what the Saturday hours are and Sunday's hours. So I just walked, I didn't, I wasn't clear. That's a loaded question too. Okay, and it's, it's loaded because fairly recently, the library on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday closed at 9:00. Now it closes at 8:00. So right there, we lost four hours. Okay, now, I think under Tim's leadership as a director, I think it used to be, the library used to open at 10:00. And I think he backed it up to 9:30. Okay, so you gain three hours a week there because six days goes through. Okay, but you lose, I think, fairly recently, not too long ago, but probably before the pandemic, the library used to close at, I think, 9 o'clock on Friday. Now it closes at 6:00. So we lost three hours there, and we lost four hours, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. At seven hours, we lost. And I don't know what else we gained. So I just saw that we expanded hours in 2023. I just went on this third grade arithmetic. I'm either missing something or we're doing smoke and mirrors.
I mean, there's definitely layers to all these answers, so if you give me some time to do my due diligence here, like I said, I'm happy to follow up with you. Do you have any further questions?
Oh, yeah.
How many more?
Two more.
Two more, all right, just checking, just because I'm writing, I'm writing them down.
I'll come to another meeting and give you some of the others.
No, that's fine. I just wanna make sure I write them.
So we can work on them.
Yeah.
I browse the stacks here. A long time ago, you had great books of the Western world, Cyclopes, Britannica, 54 volumes, published in 1952, all before Tim was here. And it was here for quite a while. Then I came in one day to go get them and they were gone. No longer in the library. Now, to me, I understand that you track all the books. And a lot of books that never, ever get taken out, you remove from the shelves. But there are some books that in a library like this, because this is not your rinky-dink library, right, it's a $4 million a year library. Okay, we've got a lot of people doing a lot of things to keep this thing going. And some books should never be removed. That's one example. I'll give you two more. You used to have a tremendous, before the library shut down for the pandemic, you used to have a tremendous collection of Kennedy books. President Kennedy, he's got a, you know, all the, you know, he's got brothers and sisters and children and grandchildren and all the lives. You probably had three or four shelves Kennedy books. And I was reading one of, called Forty, Forty Ways to Look at JFK by Gretchen Rubin. It was the kind of book where you can pick up and start to read it anyplace. And so I came, and I had been reading it, so I came in, the pandemic opened up, gone. And if you look at your collection now, it's really a shadow of what it used to be in terms of the number of books that you used to have in the Kennedy collection. Now that's just from a personal experience. But I took a look at your collection, and then I tried to go with Colony Library, and you go up the stairs and you look at their Kennedy collection. I counted 15 biographies of just JFK. And I'm saying, why did the, why did the Kennedy collection somewhat disappear during the pandemic end of renovation? And the excuse may be, well, nobody ever takes them out. But in my case, sometimes I come here and roll the stack, roll the stacks, and like Forty Ways to Look at JFK, I was pulling that off the rack once in a while, read a chapter, and put it back. I just wonder why a collection like that is so diminished, because you spent all the money putting the collection together. That's my question there. Um. How come you don't decorate the library for Christmas? You put lights on the, you're not against Christmas, as I understand it, because you got lights in the front of the building, which look good. But I think I would expect to walk in here and see a Christmas tree and a few wreaths around where the ladies check out books, the self-checkout. Is that a crime not to have that? And it's Hanukkah time too. I mean, I'm not Jewish, but, you know, I need a few, what do they call them, menorahs? You couldn't have four or five of them. I'm just saying, what's going on? What's wrong with, I mean, am I out of bounds? Am I whacked out? It just sticks out like a sore thumb. It's kind of like, is this the holiday time? I know they don't, God forbid, we call it a Christmas concert. I still call it Christmas concert, but that's because I'm 150 years old. Okay? So, that's my speech there. You want me to list them all?
Might as well finish. It's for time. I didn't know how many.
I got three more. Pandemic. You stay at full employment during the pandemic, is that true? Is that true?
I believe so.
Okay. How did you get away with full employment when the library was shut down for like a fair part of two years? I went over to Colony Library, and they weren't shut down as long as you were. They were open uh, I think, early in '21. We shut down, I was here on Thursday, the 12th of March, and you were open. Friday, 13th of March, they closed for a long time. They opened back up, so I talked to the lady there, and she said, yeah, we're open, but we have 48 employees, but we laid off 33, so we're just running a library with 15 employees. So, somebody told me, I didn't, I wasn't even paying attention, somebody told me, you know, I see you in the library all the time. I said, yeah, you know, the library's closed now for obvious reasons. But I said, I don't think there's any layoffs. And how many employees does this library have? At least 48 or 50, right? And nobody got laid off? I'm not looking to ruin anybody's life, but I'm just saying, how were? This is the one thought that crossed my mind. Wait a minute now, when the building and library is open, everybody gets paid, and when the building and library is closed for a pandemic, everybody gets paid. Maybe that's union rules, I don't know. Is that a law that has to happen? Is that the way it's supposed to work? That's my question. Now, one thing that I seem to have noticed, just a question, I could be wrong here. But I kind of get the feeling in the last few months, maybe even longer, that there's fewer people that come to this library. Is that true? Because you keep track, everybody goes to that door, right, in terms of numbers?
It's not true that there's a giant reduction.
It's not true?
Yeah. Basically, there's a report in this month's report that, and we do track people going in and out of the doors, which is the question that you asked. Two months ago, we had 5,000 active users check something out during the month. This month, it was 4,700, and that's a different stat. It's not people going in and out the door, it's different people checking something out. So it's, you know, relatively small percentage, 500, yeah, 500 person drop would be 10%, so a 300 person drop is probably 7% or 6%. The door count, nothing noticeable as.
Okay.
But first.
I just thought that, plus I see on the sign once in a while, it says, this is a sign, please visit your library, which I don't think I used to see that much, and I was possibly thinking that maybe two people for whatever reason aren't coming in.
We just thought it was a clutter message.
Okay. My last question is, really isn't a question, but I noticed in the write-up, regarding Tim's retirement, that you increase, you had an increase in security cameras?
Yes.
Are there security cameras throughout the library, outside?
Yes.
All over the place? So, so you're in good shape. If you, if somebody came in here and started stealing books, so to speak, you could, you'd be able to pick them up?
Most of the time.
Most of the time?
Yeah.
I just, I was just, I just wondered that. That's it, I'm done. You gonna throw me out or do I get to say?
I think you can stay. And then make sure, if you write it down, an email or a phone number, whatever's the best way, so I could do my diligence and get back to you.
I see you here all the time. What's your name again, sir?
Well, it's Ray.
During the used book sale, he's there every week.
Oh, in the summer, yeah.
In the summer.
Yes.
So, thank you for your, your input, Ray. I'm sure we get back to you for sure.
Right, thank you very much for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm not sure there's anybody who does more hours in the library as a patron than Ray.
I'm just a casual observer.
I was here all the time.
That's true.
Okay. So, next up is Personnel Actions, and I just want to, I think my paper was. Okay, I gotta go over one a second to find theirs.
You got it.
Oh. I mean, I think we could still do it at this normal time. This is just accepting, right? Or do we have to, do we want to discuss?
Oh, okay.
That's, um. And else?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, so for Personnel Actions, we Yes. Okay. All right. So for personnel actions, uh, we have to approve the appointment of Vincenza Allegra, part-time library page for the circulation and collection services department effective January 10th, 2024. I may have, I said that right. To accept the early retirement of Louis Warner, full-time maintenance department head in the maintenance department effective May 28, 2024. Lauren Vincent, full-time principal clerk in the circulation and collection services department effective May 28, 2024. And to accept the resignations of Genevieve Gates.
Yes.
Yes. Full-time librarian one for the programs and public services department effective January 8th, 2024. John Laring, full-time tech assistant at the IT department effective December 22nd, 2023. And approve the termination of Christopher Walcott, part-time library page for the circulation and collection services department effective December 21st, 2023. Any comments or discussion on any of those?
I just had a question on Genevieve. Are we replacing her or she's agreed on the terms?
Believe we did list a position, didn't we?
We're partly here, so.
Okay. I move that we accept the personnel actions as stated.
Okay.
All in favor of the approval of the personnel actions? Anyone opposed or stating? And for the, the two accepting early retirement, I just wanted to say thank you for your years of service here at the library. We thank you for all your hard work to.
As the outgoing director, I want to second that. So although I officially can't second anything.
Not officially. Yeah. And of course, thanks to all, all staff who we have that come and work with us for any length of time. We appreciate all your, your hard work. All right. We have the treasurer's report. George.
Good evening. So we met virtually on Tuesday with the finance committee and reviewed the financial statements. And we'll start with the statements of net position, also known as the balance sheet. And there's nothing really remarkable on this, you know, as we would expect. As the year goes on, after, after we receive the tax levy, the short-term investments did decrease. That decrease essentially was made up by the reduction in accounts payable as well as funding the current month's operations. And I think that's really it. I mean, it's really what we would expect. On the statements of revenue, expenses and changes in that position. I think that, you know, when we, when I reviewed it, there wasn't anything that just jumped out at me and said, you know, well, that's really unusual or anything. We were, if you look at line 29, we were very favorable on interest and investment income. And you would expect that because we did receive the tax levy. So this is probably the highest our balances have been. And then that'll decrease throughout the remaining months until next year again. So it's really following a pattern. And, you know, you look at the variances and there's some slight variances back and forth. But I think nothing that much during the month or year to date. And we are still on line 31, we're still favorable both for the month and year to date on the variance. So, and I would expect that to continue. These are six months. So you would think that that could replicate itself over the next six months with a couple of exceptions. Oh, and the investment report is a lot shorter than it used to be because we did transfer a lot of the investments to the NBT intra-fine accounts. Yeah. And within the package, there are, there's a listing of all the investments that's held by NBT, the, the reciprocal CDs. So you can see where they are. And it is kind of, there's a mixture, you know, they're from New York and really spread out and everything throughout the nation. I think that's, yes, I actually don't have the check register in front of me, but not that it would matter. I mean, I would memorize, but, but again, you know, it's funny, when I was looking at it, I was just surprised that there was a payment to the receiver of taxes. And then I realized that it's the water bill and everything goes there. We still pay the water bill and everything. I was wondering why we're paying taxes, but it occurred to me pretty quickly. And I just, you know, there really wasn't anything unusual. I don't know if the board has any questions.
Yeah, I have a question. I want to check register.
Okay.
Universal benefits for CDP HP are around 28,000. Is that a quarterly payment for health insurance or?
I suspect it's monthly, but.
And I know that David and Jackie are listening in the office. So if one of you guys could email me the answer, that would be great. I don't know if it's quarterly. I would, it's, it's not answered by anybody. So that's not the text I was looking for. So I'll get right back to you, I guess.
Yeah, typically they go monthly. So I'd be surprised if it wasn't monthly, but we'll get a more definitive answer from.
Well, while we're waiting, I just had a question about the intra-fine investment and if it was performing like we were expecting. I know that there'd been discussion in previous board members about, you know, the higher rate of return.
I think it's performing as expected. Um, there was a couple of CDs that matured in the, during the month, showing down, well, they're not showing below. But they were replaced with three-month CDs for about 315,000. And they did leave it with Broadview, yeah. I was thinking of LPL or whoever they used to be. And the rates slightly higher, about 15 basis points, which isn't, I mean, it's a little bit, but you, you know, not significant. So I think that as the treasury bills mature, I think they're going to look at it on a case-by-case basis and just see. But, you know, I think that the intra-fine account, I think what's working well about it is the staff is doing a really good job at leaving it in the account until it's needed. And when you look at the bank balances, um, you know, there's, they really reduce the balances down. I mean, we used to have a lot of money. If you look at 630 and it's down to about 58,000. So I think we really minimized the, the non-invested cash that we were holding. So, which I think is really good. They've done a good job. I don't say that very often, so.
Yeah. Just, just refresh my memory to, and we'll discuss this. Was there, and when we looked at the specs on the CDs, was there a requirement regarding investments in the state of New York versus the rest of the country? I seem to remember something like that, not exclusively, but I think there was some comment about where the investments with the, the money would be invested.
I don't remember saying that it would be limited to New York. I know that they have a lot in New York.
Right.
I think they are, from what I remember, they're reciprocal investments. So they give money to a bank and wherever.
It was reciprocal.
And that bank invested here. So in theory, it splits up the risks that it's within the FBI, but it still brings, it keeps the money in our community and everything.
Thanks, George. I've delayed it. Happy anniversary.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Very important. I remember the last meeting. Just, that is, that's a monthly insurance bill. So, thank you, Jack.
Any other questions? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the check register in January 2012? Mike? Over seconds. All right. All in favor of accepting the check register for January 2024? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? One of savings, right? All regions, moving on to.
I'm sorry. Do we also have, did we, do we have to accept the financial statements or no?
No, I think, I think, thank you for my new statements. And we just.
Thank you.
That's come up like a couple times. Yeah, I don't know. It is pretty funny, but thank you for your report. We appreciate it. All your hard work. All right. Going on to the direct, sorry, I said, we need reports ahead of time. Directors and department head reports for, it says October 2023, but.
Sorry about that typo. Yeah. I don't want to do the October one again. So welcome to your very last edition of Weekend Update with me. If I had more, if I had more creativity, I would have written it like Weekend Update. But, so we finished, Nate and I, the interviews for the first round for the administrative assistant position. And now Nate and Natalie are, have begun the interviews for the second round. There are a lot of good candidates. I do want to, and Ray, you'll be happy to hear this, but the craft fair on Saturday, March 9th will include a book sale component. So I'm glad that that's developing. Just FYI, you know, Chris Lancheton has retired. Gervin and Ferlazzo has given us a young lawyer named Megan Brennan. We are chuckling about the fact that Megan Brennan is also the name of our architect.
It's not the same person, right?
It's not the same person, spelled a little bit differently. The passport service is proving popular and the recent decision to telescope it into two days a week is working well for both the customers and the staff. Are they Tuesday and Wednesday?
Wednesday and Thursday.
Wednesday and Thursday. 10 to 3. And the, the staff members who do this are all volunteering. So we thank them for that. January is, I mean, they're, they're being paid, but we were not able at this point to require that everybody in certain employment classes become trained in passport agents. Uh, we do hope to discuss that with CSEA in the labor management coming up. January is the month where all these volunteers get recertified every year. So they're doing four hours of training this month. So we thank them again for that. Just a reminder that we do close at five tomorrow instead of six. Uh, thank you for voting to close an hour early for the staff holiday party, which we have after the holidays because everybody's so busy during the holidays. Uh, the annual library advocacy day is coming up February 7th. This is where Natalie, in this case, will go downtown with a whole bunch of folks from other libraries in the Upper Hudson library system and meet with Pat Fahey and Neil Dresland, sometimes with their staffs and emphasize the needs of the library community as a whole. And in some cases, like when you're going into a construction project, you emphasize the needs of your particular library, which we did. And we are grateful for the support of Pat Fahey and former Senator Amidu. So that's February 7th. You should be getting some information about that via email. Um, any board member who's interested in going is certainly welcome to go. And typically, now I don't want to commit Natalie to anything, but when, when I was going every year, I would uh, do a carpool downtown. So you had fewer parking, uh, receipts and so forth to, uh, to juggle. And, uh, and you took up fewer parking spaces. Um, circulation, as you'll note in the monthly report, is down in all categories except for the young adult books. And I suspect this is the impact of the holidays, that the main categories or the other categories are down. YA books were up 13%. But if you look at your pie chart, YA is about 3%, I think, or 4% of our circulation. So it takes fewer checkouts to make that go up 12% than it would be adult books, et cetera. In that department, Kathleen, Lauren, Carly, Quinn and Holly all completed, uh, management training. Uh, so we thank them for doing that. In the adult services and the children's services reference department, we answered 3,016 questions, uh, over the month of December. Uh, it's a healthy workload. The youth services, one of the particularly nice programs in the last, uh, in December was that Jocelyn Wilder did a series of four music maker storytimes. Jocelyn herself is very musical, but for one of them, it was a great, uh, collaboration with the ukulele group, the Norman Skills Strummers, who meet here usually on this night, the third Thursday of the month. Uh, they came in and played for the kids and sang along. The Lego Free Play continues to be a very popular event. And then why youth services programs in general have very good attendance. The community services and outreach department headed by Maria Buell had a very successful Monet and Degas pair of virtual lectures that were highly attended, 75 people-ish in both cases. Um, and the virtual authors program that we signed up for in partnership with the foundation continues to be one of our most well-attended programs. Also, uh, many parts of the library helped with the December holiday card drive for the community caregivers. And, you know, I'm on my way out. So I'll just mention, Ray, that community caregivers asks us to call it a holiday card drive and not a Christmas card drive. And not everybody feels the same about that, but it's a free country. So they told us to do holiday cards and that's what we're doing. Just a second for my cough drop to kick in. The Maria also reports in her report that she was awarded $1,500 for the six-part reading and discussion series on Hamlet in March and April that will culminate in showing the Kenneth Branagh, Branagh movie version of Hamlet. While we're on the subject of Shakespeare, please forgive me for mentioning that my wife has published a book called Lessons from the Bard, What Shakespeare Can Teach Us About School District Leadership, uh, with a foreword by Paul Grandal. And on Friday, February 2nd, Paul will be here in the evening to interview Marie about the book for a library program. Uh, if you're interested in attending, if you need to register on the website, um, and it's probably about half full at this point. So if it's something that you're interested in, time's a wasting. And I extended my final day of work here from, that was the only night Paul was available. So, uh, I was slated to leave your employ on 1:31, which is Wednesday. But since the library closes at 6 on Friday nights, but that half of the building can still be used. This event is starting at 7 and I didn't think it was appropriate to hold a library event where I would be one of the only persons other than the custodian in the building, when in fact I did not work. So I extended it till Friday, February 2nd. I'm hoping that my retirement won't be like the movie Groundhog City, where I wake up the next morning and do it all again. The IT department is interviewing for the open position vacated by John Laring. And I, I liked this sentence or pair of sentences from Sean's report. So I just highlighted, it says, "In December, Tom Nucci and I, another member of the department, collaborated closely with John Laring to ensure a smooth knowledge transfer. Our efforts were centered on the technologies and expertise John has developed during his eight-year tenure." So I said at the last meeting that when you really look at the duties of the IT department, it's astonishing what they're charged with. Um, and we just absolutely could not run without them. So the idea that you need to capture knowledge that an individual has and get it on paper before they leave is important. I'm trying to engage in a similar process, uh, getting my thoughts down on paper for whoever will follow me. But in a, in my opinion, cruel twist of fate, uh, my job has actually gotten harder since I announced that I was retiring. And I have not been able to, to get to this. Those of, those of you who've retired perhaps have experienced the same sort of thing. I don't know. This is the first time I've ever retired. Um, and another thing IT has been doing in the last month, I think you'll see a little presentation about the reorganization project. But everybody who's moved their computer equipment needs to move with them and their furniture also needs to move with them. So the maintenance and the IT departments have been busy with that. If you look at the stats in Sean's IT department, every single one is up a significant percentage. Um, and I report that like every month. Um, so I, I don't know what they're doing over there. And I report that like every month, so I don't know what they're doing over there, but people keep using their services. So good job, Sean and Tom. The Public Information Office, of course, I sang the praises of a lot of programs, all of which are promoted by Luann with a little bit of assistance here and there from folks, but mostly by Luann. And I just want to mention, even though it's over, that the art exhibit in December was bird photography, all by a library employee, Sing Yun Yee Lee, and it was very good. Maintenance has been dealing this week with two leaks that were related to the heavy rainstorm last time around, and kudos to Natalie, who got an insurance claim inspection process started right away. We don't have a final, if I'm not mistaken, we don't have a final cost yet to repair and to prevent, but we think it's going to be worth submitting an insurance claim. And Lou, who we voted on his early retirement earlier, Lou is to be credited for putting up his exhibit that he developed on the two-hundredth anniversary of the poem A Visit from Saint Nicholas, who's a celebrated holiday figure, I guess you could say. And he put that up. The poem, of course, was written in Troy, New York, and first published in Troy, New York two hundred years ago. So not just notable for the broad American culture, but also for local culture. It's a nice exhibit. I met the other day with Carol Hamblin, who was our director from, I believe, nineteen seventy-seven to about two thousand and three. She was looking over some historical materials about the library in our Special Collections Department. She's a great supporter of the library. She and her husband Bob Miller are frequent donors to the library, and we thank them for that. She did note that twenty twenty-seven, which is probably within the service range of some of our trustees here, is going to be the library's seventieth anniversary, founded in nineteen fifty-seven. And then obviously in twenty thirty-two, it'll be the library's seventy-fifth anniversary, so those are just things you might want to keep on your radar, and that is my report. And I'll just also say thank you for putting up moving all these years from, so, yeah.
You met with accent on the cafe tables. Is that another problem that has arisen in the cafe?
It is. The little tables in the center that are tall do not support larger people very well, so we've had a couple of falls. Or kids, yeah, I was going to get to that next, so they're really not safe for kids, and also people of bigger sizes are having trouble falling off and so forth. They have very small seats, so Accent recommended some other furniture, but frankly, it was very expensive, so we said no, thank you. And I believe Natalie and Melanie, if I'm not mistaken, are looking on Amazon to try to find cheaper options that will also be a little safer for them. It's the height in part of the, like, the the bar stools along the exterior wall are also high, but they're they're wider, they're very stable, and you've got a
Place to lean on.
Yeah, a place to lean on that's attached to the wall, whereas the tables are freestanding, lightweight, so they were not a good purchase, but thankfully, they were relatively inexpensive compared to library.
But again, they were recommended by our architect.
Yeah, that's the, that's, no, no, they were not. They were chosen by myself and Melanie, so it wasn't an architect recommendation, so.
We don't have to get into it here, but I, I just, I'll probably bug you later on the like maintenance stuff, with like the roof leaks, like I noticed the report was all like thermostat not working, stuff not working.
It shouldn't be.
Seems like a lot of stuff going on for very.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. So you can definitely.
One more question. On the ATM, has it become a popular spot, or how many times have the kids have been used?
I don't know how many times it's been used. I did hear from Jackie, our fiscal officer, who, by the way, Jackie, if you want to text me your thoughts about how how frequently the ATM is being used, I can report on that. I think it started slow. Sean, do you have?
It is slow.
Okay, it's slow.
Transactions here and there.
Okay, so I think that, on the one hand, you know, I thought myself, I haven't spoken to Luann about this, but I thought myself about doing a social media post that we now have an ATM, but I'm also mindful of the security implications of, you know, announcing to the world that have an ATM in here, so, so I think it may take a while to for people to discover it or to feel that they need it.
Where is it located?
It's over by the vending machine in the lobby, and we also, like, I'm not sure I can say this accurately, so please correct me, Sean, if I'm wrong, but we also recently enhanced and improved our ability to accept basically all forms of payment, including cash, and so since we are accepting cash, there are some people that are kind of cash only, so we did want to have that service available to them. But they don't seem to have found it yet, and not to, I mean, I guess I could be looking at a mirror and saying that if it's a problem, it's my fault, but we found it more economical to buy the machine than to get involved in a lease or rental with a bank, so we own it. Now, we could theoretically sell it if we found that we didn't need it. And Sean, I like to tell a story about one time when he bought and sold a photocopier on eBay, because it was the easiest way to get the part that we needed. Current company wanted to charge us ten thousand dollars for, but Sean got it, got the part and and got the new, the old machine in and out of the building for three hundred bucks and then made the three hundred bucks back, so I do think that we would be able to sell it if we decided that we didn't need it.
How how does one manage a self-owned ATM?
You go to the bank and get tens and twenties, and you stock it, and you run reports from it, you know.
It's like a daily summary.
Yeah, and of course, receipts that are a sort of thing, so.
Does it have fees?
It has a one dollar fee. You don't have a choice to have a zero fee, because that was my inclination to use the charging stations as an example. With the board overseeing us, we we could generate a fair amount of revenue from those charging stations, but we charge the very minimum fee that we're allowed to, because we, we don't, we don't think we're chartered to to make money selling electric for cars, but we like to offer that convenience, so. Other questions? So somebody else will give this report on February fifteenth. And I'm looking forward to finally being able to go to meetings of the Gilderland Historical Society, which meets on the third Thursday.
You're not going to be sitting back there to give, I don't give that?
I might come in after the meeting and see if you're breaking up and going to June.
Well, nothing about on here, but thank you for your reports.
And actually, I wouldn't be able to get in, because I wouldn't work here, so I'd have to knock on the window, you know.
You'll still be with the foundation, right?
I will still be with the foundation, so.
There you go, guilty by association.
There you go.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for all the combined summary of the reports. Thanks for all of those reports together. Going on to some more reports, committee reports. I kicked this off with Building and Grounds. We did not need, but there has been a couple of different things going on, including the push to get the quotes to resolve the ventilation issue in the cafe. I know that's sitting with Lou at the moment, so we're waiting to get some competing quotes there. We did get an initial quote via Megan Brennan, and we're trying to see if we can just get a better pricing through some some other companies that were recommended, but we did have a call with, remind me his name. The HVAC, the architect.
Oh, Bobby Wasniak.
Bobby Wasniak, so we do have two drawings for two different solutions. We're going to go with the one that's sturdier. There was an option to have a vent go the air out the front of the building or through the roof, and we figured the roof would probably be best, because you don't want to pump smell going towards the entryway, and it would be like a cosmetic change too, because you would need to have like a vent on the outside of the front of the building, so that's what we're looking, there's a very minimal price difference between the two, so, and you don't have to drill through brick for that. So we are getting quotes on that, so I anticipate a Building and Grounds meeting coming up in February, so if you're on my committee, look at your emails, because I'll set up a doodle poll fairly soon. Not much has gone through since December on the mural, and that was because the person that is head of the Capitol Walls Project that we have been working with had injury and had not responded to a couple of our emails, which is understandable. He did get back to me today, though, so looking to get some artist recommendations, so we can get a committee or whatever together to start looking at some potential artists and start brainstorming design. So I gave him sort of our focal areas for that. I don't think there's much on the cafe other than specific to that, the furniture and the vent issue, so we're hoping with the HVAC changes that'll help. Although there is going to be an overarching need to revamp other parts of the HVAC system later. This is just sort of a smaller, quicker piece that we're trying to get buttoned up. And I think that's it. I'm not saying any Building and Grounds stuff, all right. So that's it. So Building and Grounds folks, February meeting will be happening shortly. Long-range planning.
Sure, I'm going to run through these, although this one I am going to ask for a vote on. So the Long Range Planning Committee did not meet this month, but we had discussed in the past that we wanted to add formally add some staff members and potentially a foundation member to the committee, and we decided upon having three folks. Our ideal was to have two folks from the staff and one person from the foundation. However, we did not get any volunteers from foundations. We're asking to add three staff members that had all volunteered. We had extra staff members that were interested in participating, but we needed to keep the committee small. So while other folks will still be invited to attend meetings, the three members that we would be asking to add formally to the committee would have the right to vote on any matters in the long-range plan. So we are asking to add two folks that are in this room. We're asking to add Nate and Luann to the committee, and we're also asking to add Michelle. Can someone say?
Wait.
Wait, um, to the committee that volunteered from the PPS department as well to bring in several different perspectives. So like I said, I would just ask the board officially confirms the committee members, so I would ask the board to consider adding those three individuals to the long-range plan.
I'm going to add those three members to the long-range plan.
Hey.
Everyone is, oh.
Is there any thought to putting Patron on?
Um, it was discussed, but it.
In same reason.
I mean, I mean, I don't really have a great response. We didn't discuss it in depth.
Sounds like a community, right?
We did discuss a community, I mean, we are going to have community, the community is going to be engaged in the survey and the focus groups and other pieces and elements going forward.
I think, I remember, we discussed that that ideally we've got a foundation member that was sort of covering those two buckets, but without that, then, I mean, I guess you could argue that staff is also.
We'll have community.
We will definitely have community effect.
But I think that's what we had to focus, that was covering those two buckets, because there's not a easier way to like, I don't know how you would call that action, help, just for one, one person. So. Do we all do it? Do we have to do like a I?
First of all.
Yeah, yeah. Small in favor of adding these three individuals, Nate, Luann, and Michelle B. from PPS to the committee? Or did you have a?
I, I'm just, my only question is whether it's consistent with our bylaws, since this is a this is, this is a
President.
It's in the bylaws as one of our, you know.
Oh. Didn't even think about that. I asked Kathy, and she said bring it to the board, so.
So I.
What do the bylaws say?
You know, the, the, it's not as clear as, as the bylaws seem to suggest that the board, that the committee memberships of these these standing committees is supposed to be made up of trustees, but it doesn't explicitly say you can, but for some of the other committees, it's explicitly defined, like, for example, for ad hoc committees, it specifically says you can have non-trustees as members, but only as non-voting members. That's for like ad hoc committees, and then, like, for example, the audit committee specifically defines in there that it will have non-trusty members, but the other committees don't say anything, and it talks about the president appointing trustees to the committees and approving it, so like, it seems to be implied that it's only trustees on these unless it says otherwise, but it doesn't explicitly say that as far as I see it.
If we go based on precedent, we did have Andy on Long Range Planning after he had left the board, and I don't know or remember, we even had a discussion or approval, so I don't know if that matters.
But is there a way around that, just make it as a subcommittee? Or an ad hoc Long Range Planning Committee?
I mean, I think if it doesn't explicitly prohibit it.
Well, it explicitly says you can have people on ad hoc. It doesn't explicitly say.
Right, and it doesn't, but I was understood, but I'm saying it doesn't explicitly prohibit them, so I guess if it's the will of the board to include this representation or membership, we think it's important. I don't know that it's super high stakes. I think I would be willing to vote on it, and then we could make the bylaws more explicit going forward.
Go ahead.
Just just from a historical perspective, the last time this was done, many years ago, my recollection, and Tim, you've could either I and A.
Confirm or deny.
Yeah. We did have a lot of community members, you know, on the, on the committee, and I don't know if at that time the Long Range Planning was a committee of the board, or I think it was an ad hoc committee. So we had, you know, particularly, apparently, I don't know if Ray is still here back there, but people that are in the library all the time volunteered and were part of the discussion, and I think it's critical that we get you know, yeah, somebody like that, so if we have to restructure and call it an ad hoc committee to make everybody feel good, then I have no problem with it.
Why don't we call it an advisory committee to the, to the standing committee without voting, because I'm glad Mike did the bylaws, because theoretically, if it's a standing committee, only committee members can vote, and committee members are only trustees.
Unless specifically.
Unless you want to change the bylaws. So what I'm saying is maybe the staff and the community people become consultants to the Long Range Planning Committee without the right to vote.
You want those people to have the right to vote.
Barbara, without the right to vote doesn't mean that they don't pay attention to. Did you get my drift?
I just think the simple solution is to make it an.
We'd have, we'd have to change the bylaws. We can do that.
I'm just trying. We'll call it something different. We'll call it the Long Range Planning Search, Search Engineering.
I personally have two goals for this. One is to get those folks on there and to move it forward. If this requires us to change the bylaws, it's dropped, because I want this to move forward next month. And then the second piece is to make sure that the staff members and anybody else that is appointed to the committee has full input and say, and equal say in this committee.
Voting is going to be a problem.
So I don't even know what we need to vote on, so maybe.
Just trying to do a quick fix here.
Yeah. How long's it take to change the bylaw? I think we have to.
No, we have to.
Go through a whole month.
What I was suggesting is that we're going to ignore the people who are.
Any solution?
That was my suggestion.
I, I don't, you know, this is not something I'd thought about before, just now at this, I mean, it's not something I've given, you know, so I don't want to, you know, off the cuff, I mean, I just, just from my impression and reading, you know, there's also in the, in the, in the provision about size of committees, it's, as this, it says, "Membership on these committees is open to all trustees on a continuing basis, subject to the aforementioned limitations." Again, it's, you know, that could be could be stated clear, but it seems like there's, it's implied all throughout this that it's going to be trustee membership on, on these defined standing committees. But, you know, I haven't spent a lot of time studying this or anything, and this is just off the cuff, looking at it as we talk.
I mean, if we want to do it proper, we could just. Whenever we need to call it and then revisit amending bylaws later, so that it's not a time.
We, we don't.
Did someone say ad hoc committees can have voting, non-trusty members?
No, they can't have, they can have non-trusty members, but they can't vote. But I think we're insinuating their, their feedback would be heavily.
That was my point.
We can get this.
Effecting, yeah. So I'm going to withdraw my motion, original motion, and I am going to move. And I am going to move that we create an ad hoc long-range planning committee that includes the members of the long-range planning committee and the three staff members that I just suggested.
Hold second out.
Okay.
Any discussion, or let's just go for all in favor, say a simple solution? Anyone opposed or abstaining?
Is it the same motion? Do you need a second?
It's technically both.
It was an emotion. I thought that it.
I think Bill seconded it.
It was, then it was drawn, and then the second motion is.
Was first and seconded, yeah.
It's to create an ad hoc committee, so instead of adding people to the standing committee, it's a creation of an ad.
Oh, I know.
Just was getting the second second.
Oh, well, sorry, I thought she was asking what the motion was.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, and, and Mike, I appreciate you. And I, can I just say though, that I think it's worth it to um suggest our bylaws changes for the future, so that if the intention is to have voting staff members on long-range planning in the future, we could take that up now, and then it will go into effect, because I personally don't think this is like a high-risk scenario. And I appreciate the technicality of the law, I'm not, but I'm not a lawyer, so maybe not is fully invested. I just think that we, if that is the intention and the spirit, we should also take the steps to correct it, because I would think that the objective of a long-range planning committee, we should explicitly outline in our bylaws which voices we want to be voting for us, just for the future. Yeah, I think we can discuss new business, right? Well, I, we don't have to discuss it now, I mean, I'm sure, like somebody will have to do the work, write up an age of proposal to the bylaws and vote. I just don't think we should wait until it comes up again. We should just take it up in short order. All right, Narina, policies. I did not say Narina. It could be an ad hoc committee that was just formed.
Thank you. Thanks for us getting this resolved in a way I'm going to move forward. Um, the finance committee did meet on Tuesday, and George has shared with us much of what we talked about at the start of our meeting. Um, in his reports, Treasurers Report and Finance, or I mean sorry, Investments. Um, and then, apologize, I flipped back to a different page of notes and then I got confused. Um, we did talk through a couple of other things, I wanted to share that with you. Um, we discussed in the future that we need to talk about whether or not um this NBT account versus the CDs, uh, how, how we were deciding how that goes into it based on the old board resolutions. So we may be coming forward with a new board resolution. Um, but we need to look into that further. We talked a little bit about uh, the tax levy and uh, something for the finance committee along with the whole board and administration to discuss in the future is whether or not we're asking for the full tax levy this year. Um, we also talked through the budget and the process of what that's going to be moving forward. We are going to start meeting um, maybe uh, like one extra time a month on our regular time in here. So like on Thursdays, but not the board meeting date at 5:30. If folks are interested in having more input on the budget or seeing the process, they are welcome to join. We will share that information when it comes out. Um, so we'll get those meetings scheduled once a preliminary draft of the budget is presented for us. As far as the audit goes, so this sort of rolls into the next piece, I'm just gonna discuss it here. Um, we are still waiting on the attorney feedback to find out if we can move forward with how we want to from the previous year's audit. There are a couple of concerns. One is that our accounting system in the fiscal office only allows for two years, uh, two fiscal years to be open and on the books at the same time, so we really need to get this wrapped up so we can close out the previous year before we enter a new one. Um, we also discussed the tax tertiary issue, um, and the Crossgate settlement. And the money that Gilderland potentially owes back towards that. Um, but we can't move forward with it because I believe it's still in litigation. Am I correct? Is that the?
It's an appeal.
Appeal? Um, so we can't move forward with putting our amount forward. Is it okay to state the approximate amount, though?
Yeah.
So the approximate refund that we're gonna owe is between 250 and 295,000 dollars. So uh, we don't have anything, we don't have anything formal, and we won't have anything for the board to approve until that appeal is completed. Tim has some.
Can I flesh that out?
Please do.
Okay, so um the, uh, you know, there's a much larger amount that's due from the school district to the town. And uh, while the uh, amount is disputed, and my understanding is that both Crossgates and the school district are appealing the decision of whoever makes these mediation decisions. But while it's disputed, interest does accrue. Um, and uh, so that was why both the school district and we had hoped to come here tonight and say, well, let's pay the portion that we know we're gonna owe, the portion that's not in dispute. But there's no point in that yet. Um, and that's not just me talking. Uh, then um it's the other thing. Oh, David Gilliam pointed out in an email today that we have not received the third of three annual checks from the school district, uh, our third and final portion of the levy. I think he said it was approximately 174,000 that was due. Um, and that it would make sense, we can't tell you what the school district is gonna do, but it would make sense for them simply to withhold that, assuming that we were gonna owe at least 250,000. And the net uh, is, it's a lot easier to let go of 75,000 in cash and 175,000 in planned revenue than it is to let go of 250,000 in cash, so. That's the update.
So we're, we're losing interest on the money they would pay us.
Every day, it comes down daily, so. They're losing interest too.
Yeah, they're arbitraging on it.
Yeah, but there, I would, I would assume, I can't tell you how it works, but I would assume that their lawyer is emphasizing that every day, you know, and saying, let's get this done. Well, they're acting in our stead. Kathy, Kathy had suggested earlier, uh, informally, that, um, not at a board meeting, that the library have someone at the table. And uh I can't remember where it was discussed and resolved, but uh, the school district said, basically, if you would like to help pay for the council that's negotiating this, you're welcome to. Uh, and if we want to send our own lawyer to the same negotiation, it would cost us more money that way, so. We're kind of stuck until Crossgate's and the district settle, you know, so. It is what it is.
And um I mentioned the audit in the finance committee report, the audit committee has not met. Again, we are still seeking an additional member of the community to join the audit committee, so please let us know if you have someone who has this knowledge base, perhaps a CPA that's your neighbor or something like that.
Exactly that.
Okay, um, but we are still seeking somebody, but the committee has not met. Um, Upper Hudson Library System, the board did meet this month. We just met last week. Um, and a lot of the discussions surrounded what Tim had mentioned that Natalie is participating in, which is the advocacy for library funding. Um, Tim Burke did share with the board earlier that Kathy Hockel uh, uh has submitted her first um, round, and that there is actually an increased budget in for uh, 2.5% in the library operating aid, which is really exciting because that potentially means that there's more funding coming into um, Upper Hudson that's gonna help out when we thought that that was gonna be pretty stagnant. Obviously, funding that comes into Upper Hudson also gets passed down to the member libraries. Um, so that would be incredibly helpful, and that's all I've got, unless there are any questions. Okay, birthday girl, Narina.
Uh, yeah, policies have not met. Probably gonna send out a doodle, doodle month for um, a meeting to, to go in order of our uh, needs that I listed, I believe, last uh, meeting. And then the foundation, I don't think they met, although I was out of town. Um, but I know that they're, they have a new slate that they're proposing, so they're kind of changing membership and uh, board administration, so once they're all settled, then I think we'll hold regular meetings again.
We are scheduled to be uh, next Thursday. Although, you know, I don't mean to be pessimistic, but it is often hard for the, for the existing foundation to get a court. So it's on my schedule, but I may not. There you go.
Anything for Narina?
Oh, no, that's it, thanks.
Uh, personnel, Mike?
Personnel and labor management have not met this month. I have nothing else to report.
And board development?
We have not met.
Uh, I guess, next up is old business. I don't have anything bullet pointed here, but did we have anything for old business? Let's maybe not all the agenda. Okay. New business?
The business is not new. I think that it's important that we thank Tim for his 10 years that are here and that we publicly acknowledge all his service to the library, including getting us this great renovation, pushing that through um, his kind leadership, which I think shouldn't be underestimated how that has helped out um, in, in many different areas, and just his commitment to the community and the library as a whole.
Well, cheers to you, Adrian. Sure, we all second that story. Appreciate that.
Don't we need to vote on that? I'm just, I don't wanna say if any.
He's a jolly good fellow.
I don't wanna see if anybody votes no.
All right, I think that puts us at executive session, right?
Would it make more sense to do the public input session before executive session, because we usually close out right when we.
Yeah, that's fair. Um I was gonna use the shuffling around time to grab um, Ray's contact info, but if you wanna give that to us now, you might be hanging around for a little bit, executive session can be a little long, and we have to kick everyone out of the room, other than the board for that, so. If you wanna write down your stuff for me, or if you have additional public input, or if there's any additional public input.
Um, no, no, it isn't.
Give me your name first, I'm sorry.
Aleish.
Aleish?
Yeah.
I'll just give you my phone number.
Okay. Yeah, perfect. Yeah, no worries. I promise to take some time then with the right answers for these and give you a call.
While he's doing that, I just like to add that next uh, next Friday, the Chinese Community Center of the Capitol will be performing here in a, in a New Year show, an enrichment of what they do at the Columbia. My wife is the chairman of the community center. My kids are in the performances. Next Friday at 5:30, and uh, to Ray's point, uh, registration is uh, is it, it is requested, uh, and it may be standing.
Standing room only, right?
So get, you know, sign up early if you want, it'll be a good show of a lot of talented performers.
There'll also be uh, some uh, small amount of Chinese food available, and Melanie will be open in the cafe. Uh, serving coffee and drinks and such, and then people, she's agreed to let people uh, who've purchased Chinese food eat in the cafe uh, without, you know, it wasn't easy. She was like, oh yeah, sure. So um, she's a good partner, in my opinion, uh, for the library, too.
Awesome. All right, with that, I think, uh, do we move to? Will. Move into executive.
Are there?
Oh, for the purpose of discussing different personnel matters.
No.
I have to say specifically.
Interim.
Oh, uh.
Potential interim.
For potential interim uh, appointment, as well as discussion for the early retirement incentive that has been accepted.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. You have the first and second on it?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
All right.
With, are there any staff members you want with you?
Uh, you don't? Well, I don't know, should we discuss? Yeah, let's cut the recording and then I.
Do anybody on this?
No, but it just, it's streaming, so we.
Yeah.
I mean, I already. And then after that.